Welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council, of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order, the special meeting to order on August 4, 2016 at 6:03 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by myself. Please remain standing as Pastor Felix Bobo will give the invocation. Please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's agree in prayer. Father, we thank you and praise you for this opportunity as we come together as a city. Father God, we pray for this meeting, that the spirit of unity will flow in this meeting. Father God, that whatever has been set forth tonight will be accomplished. We thank you, Father, for our mayor. We thank you for our council members. Father God, we thank you for giving them the wisdom and the understanding that it would take to take Moreno Valley to the next level. We thank you for a vision for this city. We thank you, Father. You said in your word, "Without a vision, the people perish." So we thank you for the vision you have given this city, Father God, that is going to impact this city, impact people's lives, families, young people, children. We thank you, Father. We give you the glory and honor for, again, for this opportunity, just to thank you for blessing this meeting, that it will be honored you and, Father, that it will be glorified in the name of Jesus and Lord. We give you praise and glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Felix from Champion Culture Church. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jemson, here. Councilmember Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gaiba.
Here.
And Mayor Gutierrez.
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Eva Lopez, Deputy City Clerk.
Marie Macias, Interim City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Steve Quintanilla, Interim City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Robert Lemon, Public Works Department.
Thank you. Before we start today and before we start public comments, I ask everyone to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially towards the individuals at the podium speaking. Finally, I ask the speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the special meeting agenda, because it is a special meeting, will be limited to the items on the agenda. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a lavender speaker slip to the bailiff. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer or to the city council. The city clerk will call three names at a time. Please be prepared and move forward to the front of the room when you hear your name called. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker requests?
We have two.
Okay.
Roy Blackard and Pete.
TOT, Total Disaster or Worse. I hear words, 95% success rate. Sell it. Best in the business. Right kind of information. That's for using public funds. Public funds to advocate for a public decision. I believe there's strong evidence to show that the intent of this hotel tax and the intent of this council is to advocate for a position to pass this hotel tax. Now, I'm no lawyer nor do I give legal advice, but it's just my opinion that there is strong evidence to show through this whole process on the public record that the intent is to pass this. Go back and watch the tapes. I want to make my public comments there clear just when I said trust and I was referring to sell it. That's what I'm referring to. Back on June 7th, the Press Enterprise in their June 10th editorial quoted $46,000 was appropriated up to $81,000 for this measure. Before you pass this and put it on the ballot, giving you one last chance to reconsider this because I think the process has not been honest and I believe that it may be unethical, possibly corrupt, and maybe even illegal. Pete said it a long time ago, back in the 80s when he was a planning commissioner. The city attorney told the planning commission, "If you want to do something, hire a consultant. Tell them what you want. If it doesn't work, blame it on the consultant. If it does, there you go." Lou Desmond was on the radio and said, "How do you sell these things? Oh, you say it's public safety." And then the council spends it on wherever they want. He's been involved in these campaigns and these processes to put it together. I said, "Be honest. If you're going to do it for public safety, make it a dedicated public safety tax." This council can do it just like the 30 years of the past councils have not done this. And then on top of that, taxes, making us less competitive, just like this council did. They took our biggest project, I believe, and made it less competitive. They put a DIF fee that nobody else has. And then you go to the court just yesterday as I'm reading it, the Press Enterprise says, "Oh, well, the judge says I was going to rule in favor and probable..." And it indicated that she might rule in favor of Moreno Valley and our position. We just gave it up, as Marion Ashley said. Might make your project more competitive. You probably shouldn't do this countywide. And all this stuff you should take into mind because what you're doing could possibly be further digging this city into the hole.
Next speaker, please.
Well, I see the council is going to pander to the rich businesses on expense and I'll tell you why. If any of you have ever read the utility commissions on what was said there, you might have learned something, probably didn't do that. But what you're going to do is you're going to add more tax to the UT and then you're going to put it in a general fund, which is supposed to pay for police and fire, which it won't because you'll pull for that off for your own little gains to get reelected. But what you do is you need to make up that utility tax because it'll be in there with the utility tax because you gave away the utility tax to all your big corporations on the south end. You gave it away to ALTI with almost 20% on free electricity and that 20%, here's where you got it is. That 20% that you gave them off, they're not paying utility tax on that 20% that you took it off on. No, so it actually isn't 20, it's 25 and 3/4. Then they are selling you electricity back at the peak hours because they got their solar up there. So they're paying, they're getting paid, you're paying them back for the utility tax. They're not even paying, so they're even making more money on your utility tax that they're not paying, which is your police and fire. Because you can't tell me what this is here is not going to be paying for police and fire. And that's exactly because once it goes in the general fund, the slush fund gets to use whatever you want. So go ahead and play your little game with the numbers. But I just had a deal out with Marshall and he agreed with me. He cannot prove that what you're doing with the money once it gets in there. And I could say, "You're cheating all the people. You're making all of us pay the utility tax." The corporations like Procter &amp; Graham over there, where's their corporation office? Cincinnati. Are we getting any money from Cincinnati, Ohio? I don't think so. You don't care. You don't even figure out how to figure the dollar. All you care about is getting them big businesses in there so they give you campaign money so you can rerun. There is no other reason. I mean, I'd be for it if they'd put it together. I'd put a solution to the problem. You didn't read it because the insurance didn't call me up and ask me what I said. So keep it up and keep doing what you want and giving away the money to the rich people and keep socking it to us at the other end because we got to buy that, pay that utility tax that you just gave away. You gave ALTI a bunch, you gave it to all the rest of them, Fitcher, everybody else on electricity. Everyone of them ain't paying it on that. Besides that, it's not whatever percentage you add to 5 and 3/4 on top of that. And if they got the solar up there, they're even paying less because they're selling to all the rest of people and selling to the people that don't have solar. So they're paying. So you would like, just like I say with Hillary Clinton, you just love them taxes. So you guys all be with Hillary and you get them taxes on the little guy and let the big guy play while the little guy pays.
That concludes all the public comments.
Okay. Would any councilmembers like to make their reports or comments at this time? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and move straight to our first item, which is A1, Resolution, Amending Resolution 2016-44 to reinstated and replace the transient occupancy tax ballot question as set forth in Section 2 of Resolution Number 2016-44. Marshall?
I'll be doing the report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. It said financial.
So what you have here is that you have a resolution that, again, is going to just restate the ballot measure and we are going to, if you approve this new ballot measure language, we're going to submit a new resolution to the registrar's office that's going to indicate to the registrar that we're replacing the one that we filed previously. And so what's being added to this particular tax measure language is we're including information as to how much additional revenue that's going to be produced on an annual basis. That's an estimate and that's estimated to be about $650,000. We also indicate in the measure language that the additional revenue will be subject to audits conducted by independent auditors and that the additional revenue will be subject to the review and evaluation by a financial oversight committee that will be set up by the city council if the measure passes. Finally, the new measure language indicates that the revenue produced by the tax will only be used for local, general municipal services and programs within the city. So, and we also included with this resolution an ordinance so that the voters will see in the voter's pamphlet the actual ordinance that will be incorporated into the municipal code. And the only thing that's being amended is that we're increasing the tax from 8% to 13%. And again, this is a, the transient occupancy tax that's commonly known as a hotel tax. It's a tax that's imposed on guests of all of our lodging establishments in the city, which includes hotels, motels, you know, any place that is occupied for 30 days or less, which also includes vacation rentals as well. So the recommendation from staff is to adopt this resolution so we can have the question revised. And I'll read the question for the record here. So here's the proposed ballot measure language. Moreno Valley Safety Vital Services Fiscal Stability Measure. To maintain community safety, quality neighborhoods by retaining police, firefighters, youth, senior services, drug gang prevention, library, parks, street maintenance, and other services, shall an ordinance be adopted updating Moreno Valley's existing transient occupancy tax, hotel tax, from 8% to 13%, paid only by overnight hotel lodging guests, providing $650,000 annually that can only be ended by the voters, requiring independent audits, financial oversight committee, and all funds used locally.
Okay.
concludes my report.
Yeah, and this is basically what we voted on before.
That's correct, which is modification of the language.
Mm-hmm. Okay. See, okay, Councilmember Jemson.
Attorney Quintanilla, can you please remind again the public and the council members, if we were to have it state that it would go to public safety only, what changes would have to be made as far as the process?
Under state law, it recognizes basically two types of taxes. There's a whole bunch of different taxes in California, but basically there are general taxes and there are special taxes. A general tax is what you have before you. It's a tax that will produce revenue that's collected and put into the general fund and can be used for general municipal services. If you include in the measure restrictions as to how that revenue is to be spent, so if you limit it to, you know, one category or a few categories, then that creates, that will be, that constitutes a special tax. And the difference between a special tax and a general tax is that a general tax only requires a simple majority vote of the voters voting at the election, whereas a special tax will require a 2/3 vote by the voters voting at the election.
At this point in time, we wouldn't have to change, actually, we would have to change the wording if we chose to pursue the issue of making it a special tax versus general. But the outcome of the voters would be different as to whether it would pass or not.
Correct. You would have to change the text and if it became a special tax, it would require a 2/3 vote versus a simple majority vote.
Thank you.
Questions from Mayor Protem Gaiba?
So if I remember correctly, over a year ago, and I'll get to my question in a second, over a year ago, this was presented as an opportunity to reduce the utility users' tax. Can that still be used for that purpose or in the manner in which funds are directed from the general fund, it ends up playing out that way?
Yes, after this measure is passed and you know that there's a certain amount of revenue coming through, you can place restrictions on its use because it's a general tax and you can do that by resolution through your budget process? So the answer is yes.
That's my one. Thank you. All right. But there was no action, though, that we took as a council that if we, if this gets adopted, you know, if it passes in November, that will reduce a certain amount of utility.
Not yet. Tax, yeah. Okay. Public comments on this item? Madam Clerk?
We already had Mr. Roy Blackard.
Oh, yeah, that's true. It's just still on here for this. Okay. And, all right. Entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Number one, I mean, it's pretty much the same thing. Okay. So a motion by Councilmember Molina?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Jemson. Please vote. It passes 5-0. Moves us on to our next item, A2, General Municipal Election, November 8, 2016, Resolution Calling and Giving Notice and Requesting Consolidation with Statewide General Election. Madam Clerk, report.
Defer to our attorney, please.
Okay.
This, because we just changed, the city council just changed the ballot measure language, we have to change the language in this resolution that calls and notices our general municipal election and our request to consolidate our general municipal election with the statewide general election that's going to be held on November 8, 2016. And so this includes the reference to the new language and if this is approved, then we file it with the county registrar's office to replace whatever the prior one that we submitted.
This seems very procedural. Okay. Any questions? Seeing there's none, we did, okay, deliberation. Entertain a motion. Okay. Moved by Councilmember Price and a second by Councilmember Molina. So Price and Molina. Please vote. Okay, and that's 5-0. It passes and it moves, we move on to A3, which is Revised Resolution Regarding City Attorney Impartial Analysis and Ballot Arguments Pertaining to the Transient Occupancy Tax, Hotel Tax Ballot Measure for November 8, 2016, General Municipal Election. Madam Clerk, you want to defer to the attorney?
Yes, please.
Okay.
This resolution also needs to be adopted to reflect the new ballot measure language. Basically, what this resolution does is that it directs the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure and it sets the priorities for filing written arguments regarding the tax measure. And the priority goes to the city council first, after which it goes to either a voter or a bona fide association. I want to point out that typically the city attorney does not submit an impartial analysis until a certain number of days following the approval of the tax measure. But I, just for full transparency, I wanted to include my impartial analysis here based on the language that you just adopted. So thank goodness you didn't change it so I don't have to change my impartial analysis. So that's included in your packet as well. You're not approving the impartial analysis. You're only approving a resolution to direct me to prepare that impartial analysis and to establish the priorities for filing arguments for and against the measure.
Okay. Any, seeing there's no speakers here. Okay, I'll close discussion. Entertain a motion. Okay, moved by Mayor Protem Gaiba. Second by Councilmember Molina. So Mayor Protem Gaiba and Molina. Please vote. It passes 5-0, which moves us on to Legislative Actions. B1, PA 11-0007, March Business Center Appeal, Municipal Code Chapter 8.12 Requirement for FEMA Approval Prior to Building Permit Completion. Public Works, Robert Lemon.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of the city council. Michael Lloyd, Engineering Division Manager, will be providing the report on this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members. This item is very simply an appeal of a municipal code requirement regarding FEMA approval of a document. The developers, Western Real Co. and Gary Edwards is here tonight in case there are any questions. The project location is on the southeast corner at Hickok and Iris and the project is essentially complete at this point. The LOMAR document, the FEMA document, has been submitted to FEMA as of June and we anticipate an approval in September. As the municipal code is currently written, the FEMA approval is required prior to completion of the building permit process and the developers requesting that we change that specific to this project to a certificate of occupancy. So as part of this process, the developer has agreed to indemnify the city and provide a security while we're waiting on that LOMAR approval. We do anticipate it in September of this year. That completes my report and myself and the developer are here for any questions.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem Gaiba, questions?
Just one real, real simple one. This, we're doing this specifically for this project. Is there anything that precludes us from coming back and having a change for all projects under this type of format or standard so it would make it easier in the future for developers to move forward on their projects? Would we be able to do that? I mean...
We're currently at the staff level considering what we can do. Just some back, real brief background information. Our municipal code on, with regards to flood plains is based upon a model ordinance that was provided by the State Department of Water Resources. And that model was to provide consistency so that we're part of the National Flood Insurance Program. So we just want to make sure if we start modifying our own ordinance that we're still consistent so that people who need the flood plain insurance have access to it. As part of our research, we've looked at what the county does, other surrounding jurisdictions, and we're finding that it's rather inconsistent, quite frankly. And so we believe there's an opportunity to pursue modifying our ordinance so that it works better from a construction standpoint, quite frankly. So that's something we anticipate bringing back to council for consideration in the near future.
Thank you, Michael. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from Councilwoman Molina?
Yes. My question is, having, doing this for this one project, the one project, later on down the line, the ordinance will cover for the rest of the projects that are in the flood plain?
That is correct. The intent would be long-term to have, to bring something to council for your consideration whereby we modify our ordinance so that it applies to all developers. That is correct.
Okay. Could you explain to the public what the FEMA flood insurance and all that is?
I don't have a whole lot of information with me in front of me, but my understanding is if you're located within a flood plain, you have to purchase flood insurance. And this National Flood Plain Insurance Program as issued through FEMA, it provides access to those property owners, a means to purchase flood insurance. That's essentially what the program is.
So indemnification to the city, the city would be indemnified in case, let's say, a building was destroyed in the flood and they won't vacate it and leave it. So the city would be then indemnified with the value of the property?
That's, that's correct. They've offered that indemnification as well as the security. As I mentioned in my very brief report, we anticipate the LOMAR approval in September. So we're talking optimistically, a month and a half, we'll have that in our hands.
So this is actually protecting the city?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and close discussion seeing there's no speakers in queue. Entertain a motion? Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Gaiba. Second by Councilmember Price. Please vote. Okay, and it passes 5-0. It brings us to reports and comments from councilmembers. Councilmember Jemson, do you have anything? Or if you guys want to say anything, I don't know.
Actually, for once, I do not.
Okay, all right. I smiled. That's great. Okay. Councilwoman Molina?
I just want to say, you know, that the funny season is upon us, but it was good to see the councilmembers. Was it four of us at church? Okay, so we went to church at Discovery. Yeah, three of us? Yeah. Well, anyways, it was very enlightening, you know, to hear what the public has to say about us and it's, you know, it'll motivate the councilmembers here to do their best and, you know, to do what's right for the city. So with God's blessing, we will get there. And I want to thank especially Mr. Quintanilla and the city manager for all the work that they've been doing behind the scenes. But we still have work that needs to be done. And as far as any of the commissions or any of the reports, we haven't gone to any. That's it. That's all. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Price?
Yes, thank you. I just also attended the service and want to thank Pastor Knight for recognizing the civic and educational leaders. And as I told Dr. White from MVUSD, if she was not a school superintendent, she could become a pastor. She did a wonderful job. Last night, I attended a very sad event. I was at Valley View High School attending the vigil for the three students who lost their lives in a recent car accident. One of them is still, one, an additional one, the fourth, is in the hospital recovering. I've asked the mayor to adjourn the meeting in memory, in their memory. It was a very moving ceremony. There were 300 or 400 people in attendance. Very emotional speakers, as you can well imagine when young people lose their lives. And I just want to say that it is a good wake-up call for us to remind and talk to our children about how quickly your life can change in one second. Please be vigilant when you drive a car. It's very, very dangerous. You know, we typically see young kids driving very fast[1730.84] You know, we typically see young kids driving very fast, and, you know, they think they're going to live forever, but in a second, that can all change. And that was very magnified with three local kids who lost their life in this tragic accident. So I want to thank everybody who was responsible for putting the vigil together last night. It was very moving. Oh, one, one other thing. The city manager and I, and the assistant city manager, I think the three of us, met with the local representatives, our state and federal representatives, or the chief, I'm sorry, it was the chief of police, regarding mailbox theft. Be quite frank, it doesn't look like we're getting much help on the federal level. They're kicking the football down the field, just like the post office kicking a football down the field. We talked to them, hopefully, the least they can do. And we asked, you know, within their power, to get the word out to residents about mailbox safety. We did talk, the state, the state representative was going to go back and talk to the senator. And we're going to see if there's any type of grants. The city manager suggested possibly maybe look for some grants where we can expand our pilot program to see how it works and be an experiment for not just Marino Valley, but other communities. I, you know, there's not much interest in pursuing any type of legislation to curb that. So unless we can find an answer, and I don't know how we do that unless we put a police officer at each mailbox, it's going to continue. I think that one thing that we talked about was talking with developers and trying to come up with stronger, more durable mailboxes that are more difficult to break into. But, you know, when you see things on, when you see videos of people with cordless drills, you know, in the middle of the day, drilling holes and emptying the mailboxes, it's going to be awfully difficult. So again, as a police chief would say, if he was here, get your mail every day. If you can't do that, look at getting a P.O. box for your safety. So, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protam Gaiba?
I'll make that triple with church course. I'm a lot more conservative, so they were a little bit more on a Pentecostal side. Wonderful service, a lot of jump and joy, and I enjoyed that, but I don't always express it. That's not the way I was raised. But it was a very delightful day, morning for us. And I think we all three really felt a part of that family. On a separate note, I had the opportunity in WRCOG to meet with Julia Gilard and get my picture taken. She's the ex-prime minister of Australia, and gave us our signed books. If you guys get a chance to get a hold of that, if you guys, I don't know if you could pan in on that or not, but it's going to be some good summer reading. A little bit on the thick side, but some good summer reading. So I was really blessed to be able to visit and get to see her personally. A little unknown note. WRCOG has been under the discussions with a lot of the council members, including myself. Is now pressing forward to looking at all, at bringing in more members into their HERO program. We've taken the lead here in the city by actually approving two additional PACE program providers. So they wanted to do an ad hoc committee to begin to interview and bring in more PACE providers under the envelope of WRCOG and the HERO, which would give us kind of like, as Tom DeSantis would call it, a WRCOG seal of approval. For those smaller cities who don't have an opportunity to vet these things like we do, because we're a much larger city, and we have the resources at our disposal. So I sit on that ad hoc committee in, to help serve our community and our region. And then just recently, I was also asked to be on the ad hoc committee for the TUMF Nexus Study with WRCOG. So especially with the fee, potential fee increases, so that our city actually has some physical input about that within our region. So I just wanted to share that with the community, that your council members are on top of things on your behalf. So, thank you.
And I just want to share, I had my business roundtable a couple of weeks ago, and Mike did a great job with the staff, and it was really well-attended. We had a lot of people from the business community that were there. And the purpose of the meeting is just to let the business people know that we're business-friendly in our city, and to, you know, kind of hear what their concerns are, and see if there's anything that we can do to address them. And then also to let them know kind of what we're doing to be business-friendly. So it was really well-attended, and again, thank you, Mike. And also, I attended the Summer at City Hall mini-graduation that we had. So this was the first inaugural group. If you guys recall, this was a program where we found students that would like leadership skills, internship, all that kind of stuff. So we provided that. We provided them the leadership class and the internship component. And then I also attended the ASTRIC program graduation at Visserdolago High School. So in all, and I believe Mayor Protam was there as well for the ASTRIC. In all, it's just always a great opportunity to see the youth happy that we're extending our hand and really trying to help them out to get a job, and also to be a future leader as well. I attended the Waste Management Tour, and I was able to get a real comprehensive tour of the waste management facilities and really see all the hard work that they are doing. I also attended the Mexican consulate in San Bernardino, and I had the opportunity to collaborate with the consulate there. And one of the things that they actually do is they provide a free education, elementary, middle school, and a high school. Now, it's not licensed by the state, by the United States. It's licensed by Mexico, but it's still free. You know, so, and it's in Spanish. So if you speak Spanish, or, you know, or anything like that, or if you know of people that only speak Spanish, and they need to get their education done, it's free of charge. And they also have other services like domestic violence protection, and all those kinds of things, and it's open to everyone, not just only a particular ethnicity or group. And that was pretty much it. Concludes mine. So without further ado, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of our Marino Valley youth that passed away, Nicole Hatchett, Aldo Acosta, and Kiara Kilo.